Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the August 12th, 2019 City Council Meeting. And from the ridgeline to the coastline and from Topanga Past Trancas, welcome all in 90265. Can I get a roll call?
Councilmember Mullen?
Here.
Councilmember Peet?
Here.
Councilmember Pearson?
Present.
Mayor Proten Farer?
Here.
Mayor Wagner?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Who would like to lead the Pledge of Allegiance this evening? I see all the highs, Norm, the standby, Norm. Thanks, Norm.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
And can we get an approval of the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
All second.
All in favor? All right.
Aye.
Aye.
Can we get a report on the posting of the agenda, please?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on August 1st, 2019.
Thank you. We have a couple of ceremonial presentations. And Ruth is up in Josh Thai or, I guess, somewhere around. Hi, Jen. I'll start with Ruth. Ruth, would you like to meet me at the podium?
(inaudible) 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 Hi, Ruth. Well, this is for Ruth, and she's done a terrific job, and I've seen you here for so many years. And thank you very much for guiding us through all the financial things that you do and taking care of business in such a wonderful way. So, I'm just gonna read on. Ruth joined the city on August 15th, 2007 as a finance manager after a distinguished career in the finance division of the Superior Court System. For the last 12 years, Ruth has managed the city's day-to-day financial functions, assisted in the preparation of the city's budget, overseeing all of the city's financial audits and annual financial reports. And that's about as long as I've been around City Hall. You've done very well. Ruth's financial acumen and attention, some may say obsession, I didn't go that far, somebody wrote this, to detail has helped the city not only pass each audit with flying colors, but also received the highly regarded Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting every year since 2012. That's when I started, and it's all been good. The certificate program acknowledges local governments that go beyond the minimum accounting requirements to prepare comprehensive annual financial reports that truly demonstrate transparency and full disclosure. And this is true of everything Ruth has done, and I'll testify that. She is always willing to go beyond the minimum requirement to make sure things are done right to the high standard she sets for herself. As seriously as Ruth takes government finance, accounting, and fiscal responsibility, she is never without her sense of humor, and is always ready to crack a joke and share some laughs with coworkers and auditors alike. The auditors, that's a tough one to crack. We all wish her the best, and she begins this new, exciting chapter with her dog Whiskey by her side. They really dug into this, didn't they? Okay. Yeah. So, I don't know what's in here, Ruth, but it's your gift from the city and the city manager, and so if you'd like to say something, take pictures, do all that. You want to, you can hold the doubloons.
Thank you so much.
(inaudible) 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 Just on a personal note, Josh was the first sergeant we had down at Zuma Beach when I started on the beach team, I don't know how many decades ago, but you were very patient. Still are, in any case. Josh is up here. Josh Thai came to Malibu Lost Hills Sheriff's Station in 2016 as an acting captain and became the permanent captain in March of 2017. But this wasn't his first time here. He previously served at Malibu Lost Hills Station as watch commander from 2005 to 2008, as watch commander from 2011 to 2013, as operations lieutenant for the North Patrol Division beginning in February of 2016. This experience combined with his community-oriented philosophy and dedication to public service made him a perfect choice for Malibu. He is also highly respected within department and had a full support of the station and its, all its deputies. In fact, he was regularly ranked as one of the top three best captains to work for in the deputies' union. That's also ALADS gave him the same acumen. In addition, Captain Thai has received numerous professional awards and accolades for his service, including the exemplary Service Award from LA County Sheriff Department, the Distinguished Service Award from the Esprit de Corps Award, and the US Air Force, the Outstanding Community Service Award from Law Enforcement Association of Asian Pacific. There we go. Malibu is extremely lucky to have him as Malibu Lost Hills Station's captain, and he will be greatly missed by many people and many of his deputies. Truly, Josh is one of the really well-liked guys, and that's coming from the soul. So, with that, we have a tile. These are hard to come by. I've been at this seven years, and I don't have a tile, so you're good to go.
I'll sell it to you.
Okay. There's a budget on those. Gotta talk to Riva. Would you like to say something, Josh?
Absolutely.
Okay. You got it.
Well, I, you know, I thought I was prepared to come up here to say a few things, but I'm just really shocked and, you know, thank you so much for this plaque and, but more importantly, I just want to say thank you so much for all the city council members and, and Riva, city manager, and all the city staff. I feel like, feel like I'm at home here, and it's just unfortunate that I had a medical issue, but I, I just miss this place so much, and, you know, this place has treated me so well. I appreciate all the support, all the trust, the help, everything from the city to the station, but I also felt that good that now we have a new captain, Captain Matt Van der Hoorn, where I know that we'll have, you know, a great time here, and please do support him and also give him all the love like you did, you gave me. I appreciate a lot of, you know, I just can't, can't say enough about this city. Like I said, I, it's just been a privilege to serve as the police chief here, and it's such a great honor for, that this is such a world-renowned city, and I'm just so glad to be part of it. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Josh. (applause) (inaudible) 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 I just want the city seal behind you up there, so scooch over a little bit more that way. Everybody? Okay, there you go. Thank you. One more. Thank you. Okay, Josh gets a new tile. There we go. We'll glue it in next time. So, am I good on this to start? Okay. Thank you for your service, Josh. At this point, I'd like to introduce our new captain at Malibu Lost Hills Sheriff's Station, Matt Van der Hoorn. He's been with LASD since 1993, has a BS in Criminal Justice, and a Master's in Public Policy and Administration. We welcome him to the Malibu Lost Hills Station. You want to come up and say hi? Yeah.
(applause) Thank you all, and know that, oh, absolutely, absolutely.
(inaudible)
Well, I wasn't expecting this, but I, I thank you. Thank you for this warm welcome. I mean, I've spent the evening with Captain Josh Thai, and we've been talking about the things that he's done here and his experiences here with the city of Malibu and the, and the community, and I'm very, very excited to be here and have this opportunity to work with you, and, and I don't want to steal anything. I've got big shoes to fill, that's obvious, and he was really loved here, and I, I hope that I can live up to what he's already done for you and, and take us even further. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Captain. Thank you very much. We'd like to get a staff update on the disaster response and recovery.
I'll provide you a quick update of where we are in terms of planning from the planning department, and then Andrew Sheldon will explain the building and safety aspect of the rebuild process. To date, we've approved 48 approvals that are for like-for-like construction. This could be a home exactly as it was prior to the fire, or smaller, or no larger than We've approved another 57 homes, I'm sorry, I misspoke, it's 48 are like-for-like or smaller, 57 are like-for-like or 10% larger in size, and then 11 projects have come in that are redesigned. There's something very different about them that kicks them out of that like-for-like category. It could be the re-siting of the home completely, or it could be something where they've added more than 10% of the square footage to the home. Currently, we have 12 applications under review at this point, and a total of 116 applications have been approved. We've been implementing the fee waiver program as approved by the city council. We've issued, this number is from last week, a few more came in today, but we've issued roughly about close to $230,000 worth of fee waivers. Now, this includes projects that have come in since the resolution took effect, and it also includes projects that have been submitted since we reopened City Hall late November. We went back, if anyone applied for a fee waiver, we went back and issued refunds for those. Once again, to discuss what we are waiving, it's the fees associated with the planning department and the building and safety department and the associated reviews within the city, and this only applies for projects that are like-for-like or like-for-like with no more than 10%. So, if someone were to apply for a coastal development permit, we have not been issuing a waiver. In addition to the city-issued waivers, the Water Works District 29 staff has indicated that they too have a waiver program. For that, we recommend that any residents who are interested visit either the Water Works District 29 office here in Malibu, or make contact with David Ridman. We have his information on the city's website, and we can also give that to anyone who needs it from our planning counter, or if they call our planning hotline. But essentially, for homes that were destroyed by fire, the Water Works District is waiving the infrastructure fees that they had been originally planning to charge and the connection For folks who are still having questions about navigating through the rebuild process, they can make contact with our department. At the front counter, we have someone there whenever City Hall is open. That includes during the lunch hour, so from 7:30 to 5:30 Monday through Thursday, and 7:30 to 4:30 on Fridays. And that staff member can schedule either a consultation to go over a project, like a pre-design meeting, or if we have the availability and whoever comes in has the plans with them or materials, we'll be glad to sit down with them as time permits right at that moment.
I'll pick up the building and safety side from here. So, to date, we have 14 building permits issued for replacement main houses, plus one for a guest house. And of those, we don't have any completed yet, but we have actually some photos, I'm going to show you in a minute, of construction underway at the first house that's actually being framed up. In plan check, we have 35 projects, seven of which are under review right now, the rest have been returned back to applicants to make corrections. I apologize for this slide being a little bit difficult to read, but it's a graph showing the types of permits issued since September, and the proportions of the new Woolsey permits, and debris removal, and so forth. Here is a happy homeowner framing up the first house actually going up as sticks in Malibu, with the contractor and the architect and permit expediter. Pleased to show some progress here, finally. And then we were also able to get a video. Obviously, something we're hoping to replicate very much of over the next month. And I want to remind folks that after you pass through planning and you're in plan check, you'll be visiting the city departments and county fire department again with plans going through, and so if anybody is having any difficulties or challenges, I'd like you to feel free to reach out to me directly, and I'm here to help. My extension is 251 at Malibu City Hall, and I really want to do everything that we can to move projects forward all the way to permit issuance.
Thank you, Andrew. Brief question, it looked like that was a new slab. Did he have to do all the work and then get the slab? That's Murph's place, I guess?
It is, that's Murph's, and I actually don't have the particulars on his slab with me right now.
Wow, moving along. It looked like a new slab. Thank you, Andrew.
Sure. And then, everybody should have debris removal done, but I just wanted to put this slide up there. There's maybe a handful of properties that still are hanging out there that we're following up with, making a lot of phone calls, and if anyone's looking at this and knows they need to get a debris removal permit for demolition, please reach out.
Thank you, Andrew. Okay, let's see. Yeah, we're on to communication from the public. I have several speakers, 2A. Looks like Anthony Demas, McDemos. Hi, Anthony, you're up.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Anthony McDemos. I'm with the Malibu Times and the Malibu Santa Monica Mountains Visitor and Recreation Alliance, and I'm proud to present the 2019-2020 edition of What to Do in Malibu. It was last August I presented our first edition, and I'm proud to present the second edition. It's a vision I've been working hard on for a few years, and the Malibu Times has given me great support in this. We've really focused in on a lot of editorial content, similar to samples of Sunset Magazine. We focused in on some articles about the Malibu Pier, King Gillette Ranch Visitor Center, and Sierra Farms, so we're encompassing Malibu and all of 90265. I'm really proud of some pages on page 55 and 56, where we focus in on some of the tribute in the 9/11 memorial and Hero's Garden, and the pages right adjoining that, we've gone into the Pepperdine and Malibu Times archives and got some really good Malibu memories of historic Malibu. So, we've been working hard to do that. We have, over the last few years, formed a Malibu Visitor and Recreation Alliance, which encompasses both Malibu and Santa Monica Mountains. We've met a couple of years, and these are basically businesses and entities who have recreation visitors in mind, kind of a networking group to try to connect the dots between people who visit Malibu and great experiences, so whether it be family picnics, weddings, learning to surf, we really do, working hard to make sure that we have a united front and, and creating great memories in Malibu. So, I've left you all copies, I've got some more for people here, and these are available on newsstands at Barnes &amp; Noble, Bristol Farms, Whole Foods, LAX, Burbank Airport, and we also do free distribution at area hotels in Malibu, Santa Monica, Kaneo Valley, and the Woodland Hills area. So, our job is to, our goal is to make the best possible memories for people to come spend time in Malibu. So, I just wanted to present this to you.
Thank you, Anthony. Look forward to poking through it.
Thank you very much.
I know you've got a lot of work on, you started on it about a year ago, I remember that.
Yeah, it's been...
Yeah, well done, Anthony.
Thank you very much. Enjoy.
Our next speaker is Hans. Hans is followed by Andy Lyon, followed by Scott Dietrich, followed by Alan Armstrong.
Good evening, mayor and council. Hope you're having a great summer. My name's Hans Letz from KBUU Radio, and I have four projects I want to update you on really quickly. First, with the help of Matt Meyerhoff and Susan Duñez, the city of Malibu now has emergency programming capability on the radio station. The city's been given computer codes and access to our hard drive, and they can upload an audio file that'll play every 15 minutes if I'm not in. So, that means I can go to Mammoth. Second, it's automatic, and of course, they have to remember to upload an empty one to make it turn off, otherwise it's going to play until I get back from Mammoth. Second, tomorrow we hook up the solar panels up at our transmitter, and thanks to Skylar who's offered to help, we had to bring in a DC guy because it's, these are touchy things. This will bring us off of the Edison grid forever. We've been on gasoline for 262 days, we bought 3,200 gallons of gasoline so far. We are really looking forward to not driving up there twice a night. And all, right now, by October, we'll have the studio on solar also. Right now, it's on generator in case of an emergency, but all four of our microwave relays, studio and transmitter are all on emergency power now for when the PSPS happens. Third, KBUU is before the FCC right now with two applications for boosters on, on the 99.1 frequency, one for eastern Malibu at the Civic Center, and one on western Malibu at Trancas. The, we expect approval from the FCC because it's, it's a compliant project, we're not asking for any waivers. The Malibu Foundation is helping us with the construction costs, which are not insubstantial. This is huge, and we really appreciate from them. Once these are up, we expect clear reception of the radio station along all of Pacific Coast Highway within the city limits. Once you get past the first quarter mile down at, at the eastern end of the city, we're still going to have a little problem, but everywhere else, we should be pretty clear. And our boosters will also be solar and battery-powered. Finally, KBUU has built, and we've turned on, a microwave link from our, our studio trans, our transmitter above Paradise Cove to the roof at Santa Monica High School, and we're now transmitting 150 megabits per second of blank data back and forth between the high school and western Malibu. This is the heart of the Malibu communication system that we're hoping to build. We're testing with it still, we're going to, we're going to extend this microwave system to Malibu High School, to Santa Monica High School at, at first, we'll turn that on very quickly. This will give SMUSD, SMMUSD capability to keep the schools in session during a power outage. They can teach people without power, but they can't keep kids at school if they don't have phones, and this will keep their data system flowing back and forth. We think that'll be up in about 30 days. We are hoping to bring that, we're doing a feasibility study right now to make sure everything's going to work. We anticipate tying this building in as well, to give the city of Malibu a redundant, independent of SCE power system between here and Santa Monica, whether there's a fire or PSPS. or PSPS. So the one thing that's going to make all this work, and we're coming before you, I understand, in September, is a request for a very small, very short communications facility at Bluffs Park. It'd be a couple of little antennas. We think we can do it right behind the lawnmower shed and put them as low as possible so it won't even peek up above the lawnmower shed. We're very conscious of the view issues. We don't want to be a bad neighbor. It'll be a lot shorter than the Raptor pole, and we think the Raptors will enjoy it. So thanks for your cooperation. We're going to come back to you with a complete report on bringing the city into this communication system. And again, the Malibu Foundation is making this economically possible. They've been very supportive, and I am very appreciative to them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Hans. Thank you for all your efforts. And thanks, Malibu Foundation. Andy, Andy Lyon is up, followed by Scott Dietrich, followed by Alan Armstrong, followed by Judith Israel.
Good evening. Hans told me I was right about the lagoon, so it's worth coming tonight. The last city council meeting we had here with the skate park issue, after I left, I watched the ending, and I was pretty discouraged to see that the only place that you guys could figure out a temporary spot was actually the lot up there at the Bluffs that Scott Gillen has the lease on right now. So that means that the only temporary skate park that we're going to have is going to be not until like December 2020 on your guys figuring out. And let me see, I took some pictures of what we could actually do. Do I just press this thing? How do I? Which way? There it is. Oh. So the island property that the city owns, which is right down at the bottom of the street, it's like the perfect spot for a temporary skate park. I know you've got issues with what you need to do with it. Is it not, do I have to like? Is it not working out? Um, oh, there you go. So here it is. It's already, it's like graded flat, there's no Esha, it's right in the middle of everything. It's like a perfect spot. There's streets right there underneath that used to come straight down Civic Center Way. And here is the chili cook-off site that's already a parking lot that's ready to go. There's the two acres that you were going to sell to the fire department, but one acre has to be for parking or something over there anyways. I'll go back and explain all this stuff, but I just want to see, you can see that the, this is what you guys did with the SCE lot. You were able to give them an overnight permit to dig that all up. So what happened was, you know, we've got this lot down there. We could use it. You could switch the one acre over to the chili cook-off, put that in with the acre that's just sitting there. You're not going to be doing anything with the chili cook-off for at least another year because you pushed the budget to have the $250,000 study to see what we're going to do, and we pushed the sale of, selling it to the fire department. So we've got, we've got that area down there. You could switch it over. We could use the island property for a skate park right now. Like, it could have been done instantly, just like you did here with this, you know, storage yard that you have for SCE. You gave them an overnight permit in Esha. I mean, it's insane what was going on down there and why we can't do that for the kids in Malibu. You know, you guys have let them down. Everybody, all these kids that came here thought they were getting a skate park, and they're not getting anything for over a year. And I think that all of you should be, tell the city what we need to do. I mean, it's simple. It's simple. Switch the acre that you bought, that island lot, over to the chili cook-off. You've got to have two acres. It's really easy. It's simple. Give the kids the island, otherwise they're going to sink in Malibu. It's really, like, I just, I'll stick around and wonder what, you know, listen to what you guys have to say about why you can't do this, but you can totally do this. It's about time that you bend the rules for kids instead of developers. All right? Thanks a lot, you guys.
Thank you, Andy. Scott Dietrich, you're up, sir, and then followed by Alan Armstrong and Judith Israel. Good evening, Scott.
Mr. Mayor, Council. I hate to bring problems to you, but I'm bringing one to you that's serious, but it has a solution, which seems to be kind of unusual around here. I've become aware that a lot of people after Woolsey are seeing huge increases in their insurance premiums. I think you're aware of it. Thirty-seven hundred a year has gone to 15,000. Other people are saying they've increased 53%. Some people, 1,000 a month more. Other people, 2,000 a month. And they're emailing me, and I put a little blurb in the next door rambler, and I think I got, excuse me, seven responses. And other people, like I've got State Farm, it never increased, but our premium came up right after the fire, so maybe they didn't have a chance. Another guy said he's had Lloyd's for 21 years without a claim, and he just got canceled. So we have a huge issue, and a couple council meetings ago, and at the Planning Commission, we had people up in arms pitch for us, and pizza, I guess, for Paul. People worrying about property values. This is going to impact property values like nothing before. In fact, that's been confirmed by real estate agents I've talked to. That's why our real estate's kind of in an odd situation. So what's the solution? Because there is one. If we have the inspections, the National Fire Prevention Association inspections, a lot of us just took these classes that were subsidized because normally those two-day intensive classes are 500 bucks. And Jerry Vandermeulen, who's over there, he took it as well in spite of being, you know, 30 years in fire prevention and fire department. But if we can get the insurance companies to recognize these inspections, because we can stop, we can't maybe stop the fires, but we can stop, we can stop homes from igniting, we can stop 85%. So what I'm asking you to do specifically is to use our lobbyists, go talk to the governor who, and Insurance Commissioner Laura, and, you know, get them to go to the insurance company and say, don't increase people who have had these inspections and passed them because we can't stop fires, we can stop houses from burning. So please, use that lobbyist or anything else, because otherwise, property values are just going to fall like a rock in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Thanks for all that research. Alan, evening. Hi, Alan, and you're followed by Judith. Judith, you're after Alan.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, council members, and the rest of the crew. Thank you very much. You guys do a lot of good work. I'm just here on a positive note. I brought a problem forward to Lieutenant C. Two and Deputy Mike Trian, and they solved it. We have a dog walker group at Latigo Cove, and there was just an individual that needed to be looked at, and they took care of it in days, and it worked out. So we're here to really commend them and the Sheriff's Department for a good job. Appreciate it. My last closing little mark would be on beach accessways. There's one at Latigo Cove that's open 24/7, which does allow some strangers to come in. And there was a case when a few guys got on a guy's deck, broke his stairs, and caused some trouble. You know, these are the Sunday drinkers, basically, from way out of town. But they did leave their wallet and cell phone, which were given to the police department. So nothing but kudos for the sheriff. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Alan. I'm glad you turned that material in. Judith, hi, Judith, good evening.
I just have one question. I'd like to know when we'll see the comprehensive disaster plan for 2019, 2020. I haven't seen anything, and I'm getting very concerned because we're in the middle of fire season, and we have September and October, November coming up, and I haven't seen anything. And we've had earthquakes as well. So I'd just like to know when we'll see the plan, the fire plan. I saw the recommendations, and I was pleased to see all those, but I didn't see what the plan is for fires or earthquakes or floods. So I'd like to know when we'll see that. Thank you.
Thank you, Judith.
Or if there is one yet.
Thank you, Judith. We'll get back to you in a minute when we come to public talking about that stuff. Okay. All right, Commissioner and City Manager updates. Riva, would you like to start?
Sure. Good evening, everybody. Nice to see everyone after our break. I want to start by thanking Ruth Piaman for her many years of service. She has been an incredible employee to the city of Malibu. She's one of those employees who was here at 7:00 AM and here still at 6:00 PM. I don't really think she ever left her office. She ate lunch in her office and truly took her dedication to making sure that everything having to do with our finance and accounting department was completely accurate, down to the penny, even when auditors told her she didn't need to balance to the penny, but she always did. And so she's been a wonderful friend and a great support, and I'm really going to miss her, but I wish her well in her next chapter of being retired. I'd also like to thank Josh Ty for his many years of service to the county and to the city of Malibu. He's sorely missed, and we wish him the best in his recovery. Just a couple announcements. August 17th, this weekend, we have a hazardous waste collection here at City Hall, and we have, starting in September, is National Preparedness Month, and we have a very robust schedule of activities and classes for the community. We'll also be doing quite a few trainings for staff every week throughout September. So there is a flyer in the back that looks like this. I encourage everybody to pick that up or look at the information on our website and certainly get involved because we do want people to be aware of that. And also, one of the events that we'll be having in September, on September 10th, there'll be a fire-scaping workshop here at City Hall at 5:30, and that'll help residents who are interested learn how to harden their home and property from fire. So I also just wanted to address Andy Lyon, your questions about the skate park and the location. The city council did direct staff to return with suggestions and the feasibility of doing a temporary skate park on the Crummer site. We'll be returning next week at a special city council meeting on the 21st at 4 o'clock. And we wanted to make sure that everybody, A, knows about the meeting, but also that we have been able to come up with some very good solutions for a 5,000 to 7,000 square foot temporary skate park at the Crummer site that if, pending council approval on August 21st to move forward with it, we think could be open by April of May, or May of next year, and that we can concurrently start working on a permanent skate park there. So I know you had some other really good ideas, but we have taken the direction provided by council and think that we have some great ideas to get a temporary skate park open very soon up near Bluffs Park. And then Scott, I just want to let you know that I know you've brought those issues forward, and I have brought those to the attention of our lobbyists already, and I'll continue to work with them in any way I can. So thank you for that. I don't have any other updates unless you have some questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Riva. We're up to council. Does anybody want to start?
Yeah, I'll start.
Okay, Rick, you're up.
I also want to say thank you very much, Ruth, for all of your many years of service here to the city of Malibu and for preserving our sterling financial status and looking out for all the money that belongs to the citizens of Malibu. Thank you very much, and I hope you enjoy retirement. Can we have a kind of a, you know, a deal like we had with, you know, maybe she could be on reserve status and we could bring her back, period? Never mind. Also, Josh Ty, I don't know if you're still here, but what a great individual and what a great American success story, and it's wonderful to have had him here and look forward to working with his replacement. And we're doing something right because law enforcement is super popular here in Malibu and well-liked by everybody, much more so than the firemen these days. So they seem to be doing something right. We have a great, everybody who works in the Sheriff's Department out here is well-liked by the community, and we really appreciate all of the great service that they do. And thank you for sharing those great stories of the, you know, the sheriffs coming down and helping you out. I was going to address Scott Dietrich's stuff, but you've already done that, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Karen or?
Anybody?
Okay, Karen, I guess we'll go left or right.
Okay, sure. I too would like to thank Ruth and Captain Josh Ty for their many years of service, and you will be missed. Let's see here. I'm sorry, I don't know the person's name that put out the Malibu magazine, but it's really great.
Anthony.
Anthony. Did he leave?
He's shuffling out back.
It's really beautiful publication, and I also want to congratulate him on the distribution network. It's extensive, and I was surprised at some of the places he said it's been put, but that's great. Hans, great work. Thank you. You're just putting one foot in front of the other every week, and I, and we all appreciate that, and thank you for updating us. Scott, yes, I've gotten your emails about those things, and we'll be talking some more about that, about the, working with our lobbyists perhaps, and with the insurance commissioner. Alan Armstrong, thank you for bringing positive news. That's very nice, and I'm glad to hear that the sheriff appreciated, responded so quickly, although I'm not surprised about that. And as far as my activities, we've had a break, which I think we all appreciated, having the late July council meeting taken off the calendar. But I've been continuing to work with my Public Safety Commissioner Doug Stewart, particularly on solving some of the communications challenges that we have during disasters, particularly with PSPS, the power shut-off with Edison, and other loss of power causes. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Mikey or Skylar?
I got it.
Mikey got it?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, yeah, echo thanks to Ruth. Thank you so much and for being so nice to my doggy when I brought Jack by. You were awesome. And of course, to Josh Ty, and looking forward to getting to know the new captain very much. Hans, thank you. As I've said before, so I can say in public now, if you need any help, just let me know what it is, how it is, direct me. I really appreciate everything you're doing. Thank you so much. Andy, number one, I hope your knee heals so you can get back out there. That doesn't look like any fun. You know, we looked at the island property, but I never thought of a temporary there. Actually, I hadn't thought of a temporary at the time we were there. So that wasn't, hadn't, meh, hadn't thought of a temporary there. So I don't know the, what the issues are that I don't know, but thanks for bringing that up and appreciate the little video. Scott, you know, I've talked about this. Thank you for bringing it forward. Looks, it's definitely a real issue. It is interesting though, isn't it? Like, my own house is, you know, I'll just tell this quickly. It was interesting, State Farm, actually, when I went, when we rebuilt our house in Malibu West, nobody wanted to insure it. Farmers didn't. Lloyd's said they did temporarily, it was super expensive, and no one liked them even then. This is before the fire. And then I talked to State Farm, and they weren't going to. And I told them, well, our house is basically fireproof. You know, we built it to be in Malibu. Metal roof, no landscaping that could burn, nothing on the outside that could burn, nothing but hardy board was built. So they came out and looked at it, and they, and they said, you know, we will insure this house. And that was 250-something dollars a month before the fire, and we had pretty extensive smoke damage. And, you know, we had a claim, and now it's 295 dollars. So I don't, I think you're on the right track, and I've talked to Commissioner Lara about this in the past, and I don't know what's happening there. When he was here, we discussed this very issue, and he said, yes, that was his issue. And I haven't heard a word, so I'd love to follow up on that and see what's up on homes that are resilient in a high-fire zone. Makes sense to me. It made sense to State Farm, at least the day they came out to my house, so thank you on that. And Judith, we have an issue here, just to discuss exactly that, item 6A, so hang out. We're going to get to all of our fire stuff here in a little bit. we're going to get to all of our fire stuff here in a little bit. And besides that, I attended a meeting, the Santa Monica Organization Active in Disasters Agenda. I mean, not their agenda, I attended that, very interesting group run by their Head of Resiliency and their Emergency Management Department, all about bringing groups together to just be ready for emergencies. Pretty well done, I brought a few things, I don't know what Susan has or not, I'm going to share with her, I emailed her about that, but they have a pretty cool program. I'm really big on, on all of us taking some responsibilities and yes, the City Council and the city will do what they can, but this is a Map Your Neighborhood program through the Red Cross, which is where the meeting was, and it's all about preparing your neighborhood for disasters. I brought, I have some extras of these, it's a great program and the Red Cross will come out and help neighborhoods with it. So, interesting program, very worthwhile meeting, they do it, I think, once every three months or something like that. During the break, I met with quite a few people in Malibu on a lot of issues, including a couple troublesome SDRs, our short-term rentals, fire prep in different neighborhoods, I met with a number of people in several different neighborhoods on that, and fire rebuilds of course. And it's been said 100 times, so I'll just say it again, so it's 101, if you're having trouble on your fire rebuild, communicate, 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 it's really, really hard to build a house under any situation and it's frustrating and it's full-time and it's overwhelming. And I, most of the people that reached out to me, I have been able to help, it's really have to communicate at a high level. Come by City Hall constantly, it still can be tough even in the best of situations, but don't. Couple of people that were able to move forward really quickly were basically sitting at home waiting for someone to get a hold of them. City Hall's here, they're open every day, come by, I think that's really important. I also chaired a meeting of the Santa Monica's Homeless Steering Committee. We did a, we do a hygiene kit building event to put kits together to help people that were trying to transition out of homelessness. It's, there's a men's kit, a women's kit and it's a, it's a great model. It's, it isn't Santa Monica where I had my business, but we were able to build 500 kits and it's a tool to sort of, an engagement tool to try and help get people into the system. And they've been very, very successful at getting people off the streets, which is the whole goal and to get people home. They even have a program there where they, they get people connected with family and fly them home sometimes. And they've gotten hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people off the street over the last few years, good program. I also have had, attended Ted Silverberg's Surf Swap here, another success. Teddy loves to do charitable events for Malibu and the city was gracious enough to hold one and there was all sorts of surfing stuff in the parking lot and people were, it was a pretty good crowd here. Mike was there, we got to talk. And it was good, now Ted's actually going to be moving out of Malibu, I've just learned, so we're going to have to find, someone's got to step up and replace Ted on doing these charity events, he's been fantastic at it and done it for years and really supported the city. And so yeah, Teddy's moving, moving to Hawaii, a long dream of his. And lastly, some of you know JD Slackert that's been here, he's a basketball player who's done all sorts of charity stuff. I went to his Luke Strong event recently, it was the same day as Ted's event, same day as the Homeless Steering Committee Hygiene Kit Event, but I went to that in Newberry Park and that is a wonderful man doing amazing things to help people. He was helping, oh my gosh, there's so many people there, including the Red Cross and a lot of other organizations. He just brings everyone together to support their events, it was a kickball tournament. And just, if you don't know JD, he's a wonderful, wonderful young man, an author and just, I know Lieutenant C2 knows him very well also, just, just an awesome guy, so that's it and that's what I've been up to, thank you.
Thank you Mikey, Skylar, you're good to go.
Thank you Mayor. Like everybody else, I'd like to thank Josh for his service to the community and all the men and women in uniform and welcome our new captain, so look forward to spending time with him and him getting to know and get acquainted with our community. I attended the Surf Swap and I guess a lot of the things in the time that we had offered, but I sense a lot of frustration when people in regards to the insurance stuff. I know, I think I echo the comments that Mikey made about Mr. Lara. There's a lot of, I think, interesting things that are going on in the insurance world in California. It feels like they're kind of like waiting for the state and kind of seeing what regulations they're going to come up with. And I think that's really sad for people and that those costs are going so high. So I hope that if there's anything that the city can do and we should all step up and do that. I hope that people do come to the skate park meeting. Andy, I explored doing different things with the site that you're referencing in regards to skateboarding. Those, for various different reasons, did not work out. I did not look at it as a temporary location, but maybe that's something that can be discussed on, I think it's the 21st, is that correct, Riva, Wednesday? But I think that we're kind of, right now, set on something going on up at Bluffs, so I will wait until that meeting is when we can have those discussions. That's it, thank you.
Thank you Skylar. I have a couple of updates from out of town that affect the city. Up in Eureka, the California State Coastal Commission authorized signage at the Topanga from Maestro's Restaurant to Coastline Drive. And I hope to implement that type of signage now that we've got that through the quartz along Corral Canyon and from Corral Canyon to Corral Beach. What the Coastal Commission ruled, and this is the end of it and it's done, there's no more rebuting, is that they can sign two hours parking at night on opposite sides. And I've had a number of comments from many of you and many of the residents down at Coastline about the motorhomes down there, we call it the Motor Homeless Village. The new Motor Homeless Village, it's starting at La Tuna Canyon, as well as the one that we're all familiar with at the west end up at Corral. So, once we can start posting that to our visitor time, then the sheriffs can have some authority with those motorhomes and move them around. I have seen the videos of people dumping their sewage, their raw sewage right onto the parking areas. We're depending on Caltrans to do the trash pickup several times a week. Caltrans has to go through there and pick up the litter that exists behind the motorhomes. So I was happy to hear that, you can look it up online. That was at the last Eureka meeting at California Coastal Commission. I think that'll really help the city out with the issues we're having here in town too, now that we can do the signage thing. Skylar and I have a environmental sustainability meeting coming up in a couple of weeks, hope to see some of you there. Andy on the skate park, of course, I'm all for it. Let's just get one done. If Riva says April, I believe we'll, we'll get it done in April, not December. But everybody come on the 21st at 4 o'clock, as Riva mentioned. Look forward to great participation there and bring their signs. Scott on the insurance thing, I know we've spoken about it. I don't mind headed up to Sacramento, meeting with Ted Harris up at Calstrat, powerful lobbying group. I'll go up there, I'll do whatever it takes, but I think we need a white page and I know you're good at this, so if you could formulate a white page so that I can get that up to Ted so that he can kind of get an idea and get his grasp around what we would be asking from him and as a municipality, what we could take as a course to follow. So that when we do get another meeting with Lara, it's not in an audience, but we can get face-to-face and pen-to-pen and hopefully get something done. At least have him go to the insurance companies and let them, let them realize that we're watching. If you were at that meeting, a number of people had filed complaints at that meeting when he was here at City Hall and I haven't heard about the follow-up on those complaints, but I imagine I'll have that discussion if we can get up to Sacramento and get him in the office. Remember, this is too, is this insurance rate is anomaly of change. It's, it's going to be a five to seven-year program for most of these companies. And I don't think we got into the details of it, but I think everybody in the room would like to know that they're going to be feeling out the, the temperature of the homeowners with these new policies. If you look at Paul Grisanti's property, he started out at 3,000 to 4,000, now he's at 12. And that's a regular 3,000 square foot home here in Malibu, so those increases really impact people buying homes and financing their homes. I think that's it for me, anybody else have anything else? Okay, well, we've got more speaker slips here, for not writing it, okay. So now we're moving on to the consent calendar. Let's see. It looks like 3B10, 3B15, and another speaker on 3B15, so.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar, pulling items 3B10 and 3B15.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 You're up Bonnie.
Good evening council members, did you want any kind of a report? This is our annual report of the emergency coastal development permits that we've issued. I think a member of the public pulled this item, so unless you have any questions.
Could we go to public comment and then see if we need to ask anything else of Bonnie?
Yeah, I think Public Speaker Bruce Silverstein on 3B10. Good evening Bruce.
I'd like to request the ability to make comments after the report rather than before, can that be done?
Is there a particular property that you have?
I would like to hear, I would like to hear the report before I'm able to comment on it. I, I thought that that was a permissible option.
Look to council, I don't have a problem with that.
Because it's a consent agenda item, I don't have a formal presentation prepared. Basically, this is, the, the emergency permits we've issued this year is a, is a combination of things like failed septic system permits, emergency pile repairs, of course, the staging yard for Southern California Edison, which was done on an emergency basis is one of them, so there's a variety of permits like that that we've issued this year.
Okay, well, for a moment of clarity, I'd look to the city attorney because I have no problem with it, I just, if we look to the council for an opinion.
I'll just follow up with that, each of these permits requires a follow-up coast, regular coastal development permit. Some of those have come in, some of them are being processed right now, but eventually all of them will require that.
Let's go to the public comment.
Does that satisfy you Bruce?
Is that, is that the entire report?
Bonnie, is that where we're at?
I don't have any further comments.
Okay, so thank you for the opportunity to speak, good, good evening everybody. So I think there's a problem here. There, as, first of all, I want to thank Mr. Lyon for putting up those pictures of the SCE work yard before, after and during, I had actually supplied them. Application number 19025 says it was granted through August 2019, in fact, it wasn't. It was granted through May of, May 15th 2019, that was the subject of some problems earlier in the year. It says August. Interestingly, there's then another application, which is file number ECDP number 19-014, which is the same CDP number, 19025, and it's granted that time through August, it says. As is stated in the memo and the council report, these applications are limited to 90 days. You can't make the same application twice, that's exactly what happened here. The city allowed the exact same application to be made twice to avoid the proper process. Now, residents of the city are trying to rebuild their homes and they're getting all kinds of red tape. I know the city's trying to help, but they're getting all kinds of red tape they need to comply with. SCE, which did a good job of destroying Malibu, asks for permission to use this yard as a work yard, which isn't zoned industrial, it's not permitted, but the, the city bent it over, bent over backwards to give them the ability to destroy this open space in Malibu and then ignored the fact that they disregarded the time limit, let them file a second emergency application for the same site. It now turns out, and this will be before the planning commission next week, they used concrete on the site that they weren't supposed to use. There's other problems as well, which will be discussed before the planning commission, but I, this is unacceptable in my view. The city is being told, you, the council are being told that this is a routine matter, that there was this one application, here's another application, you heard the entire report. It wasn't a report, it was a non-report. But there, something's rotten in Denmark and it needs to be addressed, thank you.
Thank you Bruce, appreciate it. After Bruce, we're going to move on, public comment is complete on 3B10, do we want to come to council? I'd have some comments.
I would just ask that we bring back something and just clarify what's going on with this item?
I'd be happy to clarify a couple of things right now. First of all, the coastal, the local coastal program requires that within 90 days a follow-up coastal development permit be submitted by the applicant. It doesn't require that the emergency work be completed or removed. In this particular case, Edison thought that when they applied for the first CDP that they would be done with their emergency repairs within, by May 14th or 15th. It turned out that they identified many more items that needed immediate attention and so they applied for a follow-up, not a follow-up, but an additional emergency permit because there's really not a way to extend an ECDP, so we rather, and we built that into the first one, if they needed, if they weren't going to be done, that they apply for an extension and then we realized you can't really extend it, so they applied for a second one before the original one expired. So that's what the, the ECDP 19025 is and that's the one that runs through August. Prior to the 90 days, under the first application, they did submit their follow-up coastal permit as they were required to, that is what is being processed right now and is coming before the planning commission on Monday. An extensive staff report was released on Friday, it's got tons of reports and details in there. I'm happy to come back to the council with more information if you'd like, but we, the, the planning commission will be taking that up on Monday.
I, I don't, I mean, if there's consensus here, I don't need to see it back. I think it's a benefit to the community to have the poles repaired in the most timely manner possible and have less trucks on the roads and that's why the site's there. So I think that's a matter of public safety and the most inherent emergency risk, which is largely repairing a large amount of poles in the eastern end of Malibu and elsewhere where they all melted or disintegrated or vaporized, whatever term you want to use. So I don't know where the, the council's on this, but I imagine if they're following the proper protocol, that that's what we have to do.
Well, yeah, I, I'm no fan of big concrete or gravel lots, but, I mean, the entire town rightfully is screaming for fire protection and I've met with SCE and, I mean, I, you know, I'm not with them every day, but I think covering these conductors is huge and I asked them for evidence on how much it improves safety. And I don't know what damage was or was not done by that lot, I've been waiting, someone's supposed to give me photos proving it's a wetlands, I've still never seen them. As a kid growing up, I don't remember that being wetlands, I remember being off to the side, so I say we go ahead and, and finish protecting our, you know, electric grid as best we can right now. It's going to be, you know, I understand it's going to be a couple more months or whatever it's going to take to finish it. To me, that's a huge priority because I'm very worried about future fire events. It's not like they're not going to come and I don't want to make it easier for one to happen. So I, whether Bruce has a perfect point or not, I really hope we can get that project done and other projects that they want to bring forward as well that don't involve that lot. And that's where, that's where I'm at.
Any other comments, because Rick, Karen, I, I have some comments on this one. So at the Business Roundtable conducted by Malibu Times last Friday, we, our new guy that took Diane Forte's spot gave us an update on what was going on with the lot and he had indicated that it was also a cost savings for SCE. And that kind of didn't sit well with me because I thought we should accommodate for emergency. But when he made that the biggest point was it's a real cost savings to SCE. The tree trimming that was necessary, not having to move the equipment, not having to have the manpower move the equipment, bring the equipment in and out. It became evident to me that this was now his new location for starting business days. And I get it, Mikey had mentioned the hardening of the lines and there are some activities that are beneficial to the community. But at what point do you say to yourselves, we've accommodated SCE, you've done the work, now you're moving into other areas to complete work at a, at a more expedient, timely way of doing it, which costs you less, Mr. SCE? So I guess we're handing off the cost to the ratepayers eventually because the governor did sign that bill. The unfortunate part is when we looked at the properties before Mike and Karen were on the council, we were actually told by the property appraiser that that property was the lower right corner, did have some environmental concerns if we were looking at it to purchase it. So I've heard from two different sides, two different stories and I can't get clarity myself, but I really think we should follow up on this. myself, but I really think we should follow up on this, give SCE their day and their time to conduct their work, but we can't just be accommodating them with that property. I know it's the Bell property, it's private, but it needs a definite magnifying glass. So I'd like to keep the conversation open with the city manager and Bonnie, and make some transparency here and satisfy Mr. Bruce Silverstein's requests, and maybe come back to that at the council meeting or at planning.
Mayor, there is a hearing on this site on Monday at the planning commission. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 3B10. Receive and file for item 3B10.
Receive and file, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to 3B15.
Good evening, mayor and council. This item is regarding the Community Development Block Grant Program, and every year, the city receives approximately $45,000 from CDBG. And of that amount, the agency has implemented a 15% cap on those dollars that can be applied to service programs. The rest of the funds typically have to be used on capital projects. Historically, the city has had a difficult time finding capital projects. Last year, CDBG allowed the city to use additional funds to help pay for the rental of the trailer that the Labor Exchange has been using. And we were lucky enough this year in July that they told us they would allow it again. So this item basically authorizes us to do that, to extend the agreement with the Labor Exchange and to authorize the use of the CDBG funds.
Thank you, Lisa. We have two public speakers. Kay. Kay is followed by Robin.
I guess we're all coming up.
That's okay.
We are here to thank you for your support. We are the Labor Exchange Board, and you have, for 26 years, been strong supporters of the Labor Exchange. This is an unusual time for us. It's not, we've had ups and downs since the fire. We've had ups and downs in 26 years, but we are recovering. We are an important part of the Malibu rebuilding program, and we thank you very much for the support that you have given us. Thank you.
Thank you, Kay, Robin, or anybody else, because you've got more time.
I don't have much more to add. If you've hung around what we do, and hung around Oscar and all, you know, Oscar is the star, of course. The rest of us are just volunteers, and he does great things. I would like to think we do great things. We are very thankful. Every year, we battle to raise enough money to balance our budget, and we are dependent upon the city, and we are very thankful. So we appreciate it.
Well, thanks very much, and Oscar. Good evening. I see you time to time down there as I gather up my workers, and thank you. They've always worked out well.
Thank you for everything. Thank you for everything you're doing. Really appreciate it.
I'd like to make a motion to go with the staff recommendation to adopt Resolution 19-36 and approve the allocation for the fiscal year of 2019 to 2020, CDBG program funds.
Second?
Second.
Rick will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on. Okay, we're at 4A.
4A was continued upon approval of the agenda.
Oh, okay, all right. Sorry, it's in my folder. Okay, 6A, we're on to 6A. Number of speakers? Okay, first get our presentation. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and city manager Feldman, and city attorney Hogan. I'm Andy Ballen, Applewood Management Partners. We are here tonight to present a draft report on the fire response. It is a draft. We do intend to finalize it, following your input and following some further refinements with city staff, so I'm going to give you an overview of where we stand with it. I just want to take a minute and talk about our project team. First of all, and just in terms of introductions, Management Partners is a local government consulting firm. We work nationally. We have offices in Cincinnati, Costa Mesa, California, and San Jose, California. We've worked for literally hundreds of California municipalities and counties and special districts. But on this particular project, which is an unusual project for reasons I'll explain in a moment, we are lucky to have a very experienced project team. I have worked in local government for 30 years for three cities and a county, but I've been joined on this project by Dan Singer, who's here, who's been a city manager in three California cities. Cynthia Kurtz, who has been a city manager in Pasadena, Covina, and Santa Ana, as well as the Public Works Director in Pasadena. Mark Bisby, who's not here tonight, was our fire expert on this project, has 17 years experience with Cal Fire and 13 years with the city of Watsonville. He's a master instructor, as well as a certified incident command specialist. And Mandy Brown, our analyst, who did so much to help us get this report to you, which was released on August 1st. So I want to talk a little bit about the nature of the report. As I mentioned, this is a draft document, and the, normally, our reports go through a two-step vetting process. We do an internal company review, then we do a review with our client to catch any, you know, mistakes about dates or errors. In this case, we released the report without going through the normal vetting process with the client, because we wanted to make sure that this was our work, it was transparently our work. That was important on this engagement. And so we intend to now work with staff as well as stakeholders in the community to finalize documents, eliminate any errors that we have, and make corrections. Already have one correction just concerning volunteers to make, but I'm sure there'd be a few others. I also wanted to mention that there's no requirement for a municipality to do this kind of review. The only mandate that a municipality has after a disaster declaration is to file what's known as an after-action report, an AAR, with the State Office of Emergency Operations. And the city did that. It's mostly a form. We check some boxes and fill out some standard questions. Anyway, I wanted to mention this, because Malibu's effort to go above and beyond what's required by commissioning this report in order to improve your understanding and operations, it's just worth noting that this is something that you did to become better at something that's obviously important here. You all know more about this particular emergency than I do, but I think it's important just to sort of set the context. This was a very devastating fire, probably, and there's just some facts about it here. Maybe the most notable feature about the fire was the speed with which it spread and the size of the evacuation area in terms of the population involved and the number of structures involved. Very devastating fire in that three people were unfortunately killed, and many structures were destroyed. But it's also worth mentioning that the loss of three lives, while tragic, is lower than it could have been, and in fact, we can, there's some, out of that, out of those over 100,000, nearly 300,000 people evacuated, it's fortunate there were but three fatalities. So in terms of our project methodology, it's pretty straightforward. We did concentrate on what can be improved, and sometimes a report like this can read as a criticism. It's not intended to be that way. It's meant to improve going forward. So it's not meant to be critical, can read that way sometimes. I also want to, I want to mention that an awful lot went right, as I just mentioned, with the response. There were so many, such a large population at risk, and fortunately, limited fatalities and injuries. Our objective was to focus on strictly how the city could improve, and so I'll be focusing on the city's role in an emergency and what the city of Malibu can do in terms of playing your particular role, which is really important, but it's not as extensive as some might assume. So we're going to talk about the role of the city right now. Malibu's really an interesting city. It's got to be the longest and narrowest city in the state. It's got a really interesting boundary, interesting geographic layout, and it's not, the city of Malibu, I suspect this is a reality that all the council members and pretty much everybody here is aware of. Malibu is a place, or Malibu as a concept is a lot bigger than the city of Malibu, and this graphic just kind of shows that. The city itself is one of the smaller cities in California in terms of population. Geographically, it's notable, because for much of its length, it's a mile wide or so, as somebody said here, from the ocean to the ridge top. It's narrow, and of the, I had, in thinking about this, though, I had to say to myself, of the about 100 cities in California that have a population of less than 15,000, Malibu is really one of the few that is instantly recognizable to anybody that you give that place name to. So in terms of the way, Malibu's also an interesting city because it's a new city, it was only incorporated in 91. This graphic is just intended to show the number of different governments that are involved in delivering services here, and this is in the report, and you can look at it in more detail. Sometimes Malibu is what's known as a contract city. That's really a bit of a misnomer, because in some cases, you don't have a contract with the LA County Fire Department. You're part of the territory of LAFD, and, but, these cities are called contract cities. It's a bit of a misnomer, because in many cases, there's not a contract. You don't have a contract with the fire department. You do have a contract with the sheriff's department, but you don't direct how the sheriff delivers services. You decide on how resources are applied. This occurred because Malibu was really mature when it incorporated. Service delivery arrangements for public safety were well-established by the time Malibu incorporated, and Malibu incorporated for reasons other than public safety, although that's something you've come to focus on. It was mostly around land use planning and wastewater. So technically, Malibu's not a first responder. That's one of the things we talk about in the report. This complicates things a bit in the realm of public understanding and response. And the other thing that I think is important is just to understand that the city is small relative to the other agencies that are the first responders. You have about, correct me if I'm wrong, Reba, but about a little under 100 full-time employees here working for the city of Malibu. And just to give you a sense of scale, LASD has 18,000 employees, and the fire department, over 6,000, Cal Fire the same. In fact, the smallest agency that I had on that set was LA County Animal Control. They have 450 people, which is more than, you know, four times as many employees as the city has. So your perceived responsibilities are very large in many respects, but your actual, what you have control over is not that large. So then, our report goes through a series of major observations and recommendations. There's about between 50 and 60 in all, and we focus on three overarching themes: planning, education, and operations. And I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the findings in each, but not go into a granular detail of all the recommendations, because we're going to be working, we're going to be working as we finalize this report to get those things nailed down just right, because I hope this can become a compendium of how you're going to make what is actually a pretty, what you've actually already devoted a fair amount of time and effort to disaster preparedness, but I believe all the work that the city is now undertaking, which we just heard about tonight, which particularly the communications activities was really thrilling to hear. But I hope this can become a compendium of how to make things better here in Malibu, because the one thing, we talked to almost 40 people in doing this report, and it was, you know, this is Malibu, everybody, it's a varied, it's a varied place where a lot of people have a lot of opinions and spirited opinions, but the one thing everybody agreed on is it's going to happen again, so we better prepare. So in terms of major observations in the planning area, I don't want to make it seem like the city is not, doesn't have an important role to play, because although you may not be technically a first responder, you have a really important role to play in terms of planning and getting everybody on the same page for how we're going to respond to emergencies in the city of Malibu. That's critical, and I think you've already taken up that role, and I think many of the recommendations in this report are intended to supplement that. In this particular incident, the relocation of the city's EOC created a challenge, and the, one of the things in looking at this from a 30,000-foot level, like we did, is we ask ourselves, well, if the city and the county have to work so closely together in terms of emergencies, shouldn't they be co-located when we have an emergency? So that's one of the recommendations that we suggest in the report, is to work with the county for some sort of an EOC where both city and county, and I know there's already liaisons, but this would be a more robust type of emergency operations center, where you'd have first responders and the city right together. So to make that a reality, of course, we did form an emergency multi-agency committee, work with the public safety personnel, the county fire department, and sheriff's department, and I know you already do, but I think the little bit of the paradigm shift here is to try to actually bring everybody together and plan for Malibu in a more robust way, rather than being more separate and training along the standard emergency response. And the city even noted some of this in its own AAR, that we needed to rethink a little bit of our training. In the operational area, more, we can do better training with particularly the CERT volunteers, the sheriff volunteers. I think that's an area where we're going to make some changes to the report, but the CERT volunteers, there can be work done to improve that. The mandate, one of the major features of this particular emergency was the mandatory evacuation. It was very large. It was a bit, I guess you could characterize it as a bit of a blunt instrument, but it had to be done because of the circumstances that were being faced. But more training can be done around that in terms of how to move people out, how to pre-position the supplies that are necessary to reroute the lanes on PCH. One of the challenges you have is there's not a lot of, particularly on an east-west basis, there's not a lot of ways in and out of Malibu, so really, a lot of thought needs to be given to that need to evacuate. And then the EOC relocation created some gaps in communications, which with hindsight, we can better prepare some equipment so that communication. And it was so gratifying to hear tonight the report on what's happening here in terms of radio broadcasting. I mean, that is really, really good news. Again, some recommendations in the operational area, and I believe the city is already beginning to do this, but wildland fire behavior modeling is really gone a... to do this, but wildland fire behavior modeling is really gone a long way. There, you can map likely fire behavior with much more precision than ever used to be possible. And why that's important is you can start looking at different evacuation procedures as part of training efforts and drills. And it can even include the EOC relocation scenarios in there. And one of the things that we found that needs probably more work in the future is an understanding of repopulation criteria. That was a particular challenge in this fire. It was also something that was a little bit new and the city's role and other agencies' roles in the repopulation can be improved and also can be trained on, which is something that needs to be, I think Malibu needs, Malibu is very unique and it needs a very unique sort of training approach. It's going to be multi-agency, that's going to take into consideration the potential for mass evacuation, that's going to take into the, the, when you have a mass evacuation, you're then going to look at repopulation. That's something that's going to have to be put into the training. In terms of education, I, I, I get, I think a lot of education is already going on. The community, I think, needs a perception, needs to understand the city's role, which hopefully this report will make clear. The, the issue of sheltering in place versus evacuation is something that needs to be discussed at a community level and there needs to be a lot of education around that. And there probably needs to be some consideration to developing in the more hardened areas of Malibu, places where people might be able to go for refuge. We talk about that. Continuing with education, it's, communications was a really a big challenge in this emergency and that's an area where a number of these recommendations touch on. How to get communication out, how to get people to understand the communication vehicles which exist. And then community education around evacuation, around sheltering in place if that happens, and repopulation are areas where we present some recommendations. Just to conclude this, the, we, we talk about reimagining disaster training as a multi-agency effort with the city leading the efforts to integrate the agencies to work together. That's a big job and a really important job. It's hard. These are big, big agencies that are the first responders. Malibu needs to be the, what we call the convener and the communicator amongst the multiple agencies that actually effectuate emergency response in Malibu. And that is a hugely important planning role that the city, I believe the city's already taken this on, taken this to heart. I'd like to close by saying that in working with the city staff and the elected officials here in Malibu, we got great cooperation. Any document, any information we requested, the city provided to us. There was very little, there was very little defensiveness, which would be natural in a, an undertaking such as this. The city was interested in transparency to the point where we released this draft report without the typical vetting process going through city staff. So I really feel like we got the kind of, we got cooperation, we got transparency, we got honesty. And I'd like to recognize that. Thank you. Be happy to try to answer any questions. Again, this is a little bit of a preliminary effort because we're going to, we now feel that this report, having gone public, having been covered, that we can now discuss this and clean up any little errors and have a final product for you.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. And hang out because I'm sure the council has questions as well as some of the public speakers. We have several public speakers, Andy.
Okay. I'll get out of the way.
Thank you. Okay, first up, Trevor Nielsen. Trevor, you're followed by Scott Dietrich, followed by Norm Haney, followed by Craig Hill, Pamela Conley Ulich, Ted Vale. I'll redo that after you're done speaking, sir.
Good evening. This is actually the first chance I've ever had a chance to address the council. I'm Trevor Nielsen. I'm one of the co-founders of the Malibu Foundation, but I'm here speaking in my personal capacity tonight. In the 58-page report, the words "climate change" do not appear. I find this shocking. We know that Southern California Edison lit the match, but it's climate change that filled the tinderbox and let that match explode in a spectacular and horrifying way. Climate change did not literally start the Woolsey fire, but it created the conditions for it to exist. We also know that it's a scientifically proven fact that California wildfires are 500% larger now due to climate change. And we know that by 2100, without a reduction in carbon emissions, the state will see a 77% increase in wildfires. The report also warns of a 67% erosion of our shoreline, not this report, but the same report that those facts came from. And Governor Brown called the climate emergency in California "an apocalyptic threat." Yet that apocalyptic threat was not even mentioned in the report. What to do about it? Well, over 925 local governments in 18 countries have declared a climate state of emergency. This is, this approach is spreading all around the world, usually in places that have not undergone a real emergency of the sort that we underwent with the fires. I urge the council to declare a climate state of emergency in Malibu. There's a well, well-followed playbook now to do this. And once that emergency is declared, then policies can be put in place to deal with things like climate resilience, to deal with carbon emissions in our own community. And by recognizing the emergency, we can begin to address it. Otherwise, we're just going to be grappling with bigger fires, faster fires, and more reports. We have to tell the truth about climate change, which is that it represents an existential threat to all of us. It leaves my children less safe and yours. Once we tell the truth about climate change, we can start acting as if that truth is real. Instead of just focusing on the tactics to deal with whatever latest crisis it provoked, we can start looking at the bigger picture and how to make our community safer, more resilient, and how we can decide that our community won't be a part of the problem anymore, but will be a part of the solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Trevor. Well said. Scott Dietrich. And after Scott is Norm Haney.
Thank you. I'll just comment that Woolsey was a repeat of a fire in 1956, almost exactly the same pattern. It burned 450 houses. And this, of course, Woolsey happened after a seven-year drought. But regarding the report, that one, I was really impressed with it. I read the entire thing. But if we're going to look at really the overview and we could say, okay, we know there was a lack of fire resources or their allocation, the evacuation was a mess. But what leaves people the most frustrated was the so-called repopulation. When the cable guy can stop you from repopulating a neighborhood, there's something wrong. And when you look at the structure of where the city's role is, and this is addressed by the report, it's only communication. We don't really have much of a role. And if we don't solve this in the next fire, we're going to be in the same exact situation. And it's going to leave everybody super frustrated once again. And they're never going to leave again. And some of them should leave because they'll leave at the wrong time. But I'd like to point out item 42 in the report. And it suggests having a fire-wise, fire-safe community. And this goes to what I spoke to earlier when I was talking about insurance. I don't understand why when you have a three-year potential rebuilding process, but when you look at our friends in Topanga who have done all these inspections that for free tell people how to harden their homes, they're at about a 5% participation rate. People are not signing up to have their house examined. I, I don't get it. I don't understand why, but they're not. They've done 175 houses of over 3,000 in Topanga, and they've been doing this for a number of years. And this is why it's so important that we as a city find the mechanism, hopefully through Insurance Commissioner Laura and the governor and our lobbyists. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for agreeing to go up there. If we don't find a mechanism to harden our homes, we're going to repeat the disaster that we just saw with Woolsey with so many homes burning. We could, if we'd hardened our homes, had 70 houses burn in the city instead of almost 480. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Scott, followed by Norm. And Norm, after you is Craig Hill. Craig?
Good evening, city council members. I just have three, three comments, and I did read the report and the recommendations. It seems to me like, if I could boil it down, first of all, I, I just want to mention points of refuge. I, I know that my building has already been determined to be a point of refuge, both the garage and the building itself. The garage is 9,500 square feet, or I'm sorry, 9,500 square feet. And a lot of people could be in there for a day or two and wait for the fire to go by. The upper area is, is close to 13,000 square feet. It's the same thing. So I think these points of refuge could keep an awful lot of people off the highway. Moving on, I think the Emergency Operations Center needs to be in Malibu. And all the people that make decisions, both at the fire department, the sheriff's department, and all of the first responders, those people that make those decisions should be there and they should be communicating with each other. It was one thing that the report brought up. Didn't talk about the location, but it, it talked about that these people need to communicate with each other on the spot. The last thing I'll mention is the fire department. I, I really feel sorry for the fire department, especially the people that work at the fire department. They're intelligent, they work hard every day, and they try very hard to do their job. And I think the way it was put together, they were unable to. They had to wait until they, they had direction before they could do something. Well, is it possible for them to respond in the same way our police department or our sheriff's department responds? When our sheriff's department is in a car and they're driving down the way and they see somebody robbing a 7-Eleven, do they stop and ask for permission to stop the robbery? No, they don't. They call it in, they say what they're going to do, and then they go in and take care of business. I, I think that the people that work for our fire department would very much like to be able to have the discretion to make a decision to help people. They can, if, if they're not doing anything at the time and somebody comes down and asks them to help, they call it in, hey, we're going to help these people. And you'll know where I am because you, you, you know, I, I have a detector on my, on my truck and you can find out where I am. And I'll always have communication. Communication is the key. So I think we need to make more use of our fire department personnel who desperately want to fight fires and help people. And I don't think they were given a chance to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Norm. And Craig, you're up next. And Craig is followed by Pamela Conley Ulich. And after that, Ted Vale. Good evening, Craig.
Good evening, council. I would sign on with all the comments I've heard so far, especially Trevor Nielsen's about the climate emergency declaration. The report emphasizes the city's role as a facilitator of communication, a convener, as they put it. So here are three additional ways it should be a facilitator among the citizens and other agencies. First, recognizing that one lesson learned by many people this time was that they should be staying and defending their own property. That's what they think they learned. So as a facilitator, the city should be taking the lead ensuring, in ensuring that the sheriff and the fire department are on the same page in terms of what's respected of the home defenders, neighborhood defender types. There will be hundreds of competent people who won't go through CERT training for seven sessions. There should be some means of legitimizing those who can demonstrate they're more likely to help than, than be a hindrance and be allowed to remain in the disaster zone. If you could provide sort of a mini CERT course, maybe eight or 10 hours instead of 21, that would give those people a pathway to be legitimized that they would welcome to, to not become as, as clueless or more clueless than they realize they would, they would be. The course could focus on basic fire behavior, gear techniques, how to use a radio. They don't need the CERT modules on search and rescue or terrorism and some other things. This may be an option for a CERT light. And those people could sign a waiver acknowledging hazards and indemnifying the city and other agencies against liability. Secondly, a few neighborhoods have developed volunteer fire brigades. Some are more organized than others. The city could play some role in perhaps providing space for a few leaders from each of eight or 10 neighborhoods to share expertise on gear and techniques and coordinate trainings with some participation by the fire department and sheriffs so that each neighborhood can benefit from what other neighborhoods have learned and are putting together. I, I spoke some with this, about this with Councilmember Pearson. It's not clear what the city's role would be exactly, but to somehow facilitate crowdsourcing of this knowledge so everybody's not trying to reinvent the wheel on their own in each neighborhood. Finally, the city could play a more facilitative role in getting Water Works and Edison to work together to ensure that the pumps for each of our canyon neighborhoods have backup generators so that we'll still have water when Edison shuts off the power. That's precisely when we need it the most. In Big Rock, neighbors and Edison are, have been looking together on how to fund and site generators. Water Works has already agreed that if we can get the systems in place, they will maintain them. And this process should be happening in every community upslope of the main water supply. And everybody, and, and the city should be facilitating as, as a common conversation. It's too late this season to be permitting and installing concrete pads for permanent generators right now, but Edison can still be encouraged to deploy mobile generators for all the water supplies that it would be at risk in an outage. And the city can help them appreciate their liability when they shut off our water in effect. And they should be underwriting the generators and/or maybe finding some state funds to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Nice suggestions. Pamela, Pamela's up. After Pamela is Ted Vale.
Good evening. I just want to first thank you all. This fire, you know, took a toll on everyone up there, everyone. Riva, you were here. Skylar, I saw you out there. Mikey and Zuma Jay and Karen, you guys were at the Pepperdine thing. Rick, I saw you with Lou at the FEMA recovery area. And so I just want to thank each of you for really doing the best you could. But now we're here to look about what else we can do as a city. You do have the opportunity to be leaders. And you know, I think your biggest job is not just to communicate with all of us, but to be advocates for all of us. You need to have our backs, okay? I didn't feel like anyone had our backs this last fire. It was obvious to me, the supervisor never came, and thank God she's doing this task force now. Let's get on that with her. Let's get the state involved. Let's get the national government involved. If we need to call up the national reserves, Rick, you need to have the phone number for them. So all of you need to take responsibility for reaching out to the governor, to Sheila Cool, get her cell phone, get the governor's staff's cell phone numbers, and you guys can be on the phone with them and developing relationships. So when something happens to us, like they said we're going to have another fire, they will be there. They will not abandon us. That's your job. Have a relationship. Make them care. Do whatever you can, and I know you will. I sent an email and I talked to you about the other things, but I like what Craig just said too, is besides working with Sheila on this task force, let's educate and empower our community, okay? We should all have personal disaster plans. We should all be educating our kids to take responsibility for each day. If they don't take a paper bag or to the store, they're, they're contributing to climate change. That was a great comment you made too. There's other things. Every day we can make an action plan. What am I going to do? What am I going to do today, not just to prevent a fire, but to help ebb and change climate change? As adults, as parents, as neighbors, we need to help each other. Every single one of us is the same. We're all connected, no matter if we're homeless or we live in Malibu. We're all connected with the climate change, and we all need to step up. So I think that suggestion, the first one, was declaring a climate change emergency. Do it, okay? Bring in as your council item. Simple, easy peasy. The EOC, getting back to my points, too. The EOC in Malibu, it has to be here. Get a trailer. The sheriffs have one, a command center. You can take it anywhere. If you need to go to Zuma Beach, if you can't be here, go to Pepperdine, go to the Webster School. Use those facilities, like Point Dume, how those wonderful advocates and those community members created the relief station there. The evacuation, hopefully you'll get zones. Communication, I know you're going to work on that. But guess what, guys? People are staying next time. I'm staying. A lot of people I know are staying. And if I hadn't stayed, our home would be gone now, most likely. So let's prepare for that. So let's educate all of people like me who are going to be here to fight the fire. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Pam, Ted Vale, you're up. Thank you. Evening, Ted.
Ted Vale, Big Rock. We could very well be the site of the next fire, and I'm also staying. I was here for the 93 fire, and a house across the street burned, a house next door, one down the street, 25%. So we're hardening our house, preparing for the next fire. But in this report, I had two comments, among others. First one is about something called NICSIL alerts. Who does that? On 7:02 on the 9th, a report went out saying mandatory evacuation in effect for all of the city of Malibu. And that's what the news reports picked up. That's what we heard on the radio and the television. And people got in their cars and started leaving. Somebody found out an hour later that, oh my God, this is not what we wanted. And on 7:58, it was corrected. Mandatory evacuation in effect for all areas south of the 101 from Ventura County line to Las Virginas, not entire city of Malibu. It wasn't until 10:10 that all of Malibu went out. So who does the NICSIL reports? And how can we make sure that correct information is sent out that doesn't cause this panic that causes five hours on the Coast Highway? Second thing is, on page 24 of the report, it talks about the forced relocation of the EOC as well as the entire community out of Malibu resulted in a critically important functional communications gap between city leaders, the community, and first responders for about 16 hours in the early stages of the incident. Although the staff were engaged in an incident from various sectors, in the incident from various sectors, and EOC was not formally staffed for 16 hours between 4:00 PM on November 9th and 8:00 AM on November 10th. I know all of you were very much involved in fighting the fire. And two of you were not even on the council at that time, and we're fighting the fire. But what is going to be done to make sure that this does not happen again? And we don't have, as I called it at one point, a rudderless ship for 16 hours at critical points of the fire. Also, the city staff left behind critical information and equipment when the EOC was forced to relocate. Equipment such as laptops, satellite phones, personal contact information, and payroll information made operations in the new location exceedingly difficult. They left it behind and couldn't get back to pick it up. Satellite phones. Satellite phones would seem to be able to work in this situation and be a good way to establish communications. Is that being pursued? You had satellite phones. You didn't use them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ted. Okay, that's it for the public speakers. We're back up to council now. And who would like to start? Karen would like to start.
Okay, I'd like to thank Andy Bilnap and everybody at Management Partners for their diligence. I will start out, excuse me, one second. So as Mikey and I became the co-chairs of the Disaster Response and Recovery Ad Hoc Committee, it was our, part of our job to interview and select a firm for this task, for the review. And the scope of the work was determined partly by our direction. The budget constrictions definitely had an influence on the scope of work. I want to take ownership for something. There were some key people that were, or entities that were not included in the interviews. The agencies, I think all except one, are acknowledged in the report, but there were not people from those agencies, or at least key people, interviewed. So as we go forward and augment this report or work in conjunction, I'd like to request the inclusion of Maria Greikhan from LA County Fire Department, the LA County Life Guard. I'm not sure what his title is exactly. Fernando Boyto, Life Guard Chief Boyto. Sorry, what is it?
OTA.
Okay, sorry. People at the City of Santa Monica, staff members where our EOC was hosted when it was, when the evacuation of the city, of City Hall, was ordered. And I would like interviews to take place with some of the utilities, Edison, SoCal Gas, Water District 29. I think it's critical that they be included in the interview process and the final report. I appreciate the approach that you all took. I know you have experience in cities, in EOCs, in county government. And there obviously is an appreciation for what you acknowledge numerous times, the limited role or the limited authority of the city. But I will say, for example, I received an email from Mark Russo, the head of the Sheriff's VOP, as the Volunteers on Patrol. And I really have to say that their activity was mischaracterized in the report. I know that Mark gave a thorough recap of what they did, the number of hours that they put in, where they were, and how they were doing their job. And I know, Andy, that you acknowledged that and that it would be corrected. And I want to just read a little bit of your cover letter, especially for anybody who's watching at home. If anybody hasn't read the report yet, I encourage you to, despite some of the discrepancies and some inaccuracies. But in the cover letter, it states, "We are releasing this report as a draft document." And as Andy said, typically, Management Partners would review the report with the client before issuing a final report to ensure that the data, information, and assumptions that serve as the basis of our observations and recommendations are accurate and supportable. In this case, it was decided to release the report as a draft to staff and the city council concurrently in order to avoid any appearance that the staff may have unduly influenced our observations and recommendations. So those are key words, that this report was done independently. Interviews were conducted. There's a list at the back of the report of each person that was interviewed. I'm happy to give you those names in writing of the ones I just suggested. And I went through, and I'm sure a lot of people did, and made notes, page by page, but we don't have to do all that at this moment. I would like to request that a revised final report be worked on together by Management Partners along with staff. I know that every department head has reviewed the report and made their own notes, so that we can deal with any missed information, any discrepancies, any inaccuracies, et cetera, so that a final report, and Andy, you stated this a couple of times already, so that a final report can be brought back to the council for review and adoption. So I feel like I could talk about this for two hours, but I won't. So those are my comments for now.
Thank you, Karen. Mikey indicates he'd like to go.
Sure, since Karen's co-chair on this committee. Wow. Thank you. A lot of work, I'm sure. Interesting to read. I think, for myself, what's interesting about reading is I realize how little I played a part in most of it. So with no communication, sitting in my neighborhood, trying not to get arrested. No, it's not aimed at you, Jen. Trying to take care of people, trying to take care of animals, et cetera. With some help from Riva, thank you. Yeah, it's interesting to see what you wrote. Basically, to be honest, everything I read made perfect sense. We can, obviously, want to tighten up our communication. We want to have, you know, backup on our plans. And it all made perfect sense. I like some things that were said about forming different groups, other things like that. There's a lot of good detail there. It made me think about some of the things you're talking, the CERT, the CERT section, made me think about some of the things that are already happening. And then, sitting down, talking with other people, realized there's a lot of other things happening in conjunction with your report. And it made me, it really made me realize one thing, that if there's any one thing, we're going to have fires again, but it, communication is number one to me. And just being able to communicate in a disaster in Malibu has been a historic problem. So I'm really excited with what KBO is doing, Hans is, and other things that are going on. And I realize that there's a lot going on that not everybody even knows right now. So no one's sitting around doing nothing. And some of the ideas you guys stood up here and talked about, people are working on really hard. I would love to see us get more of that out and talk about it more. So I know sometimes when you're forming plans, it's hard to like communicate that all the way along the way because it makes it difficult. But that's kind of my feeling right now. I know I'm being a little vague, but I can tell you that in my experience, which has been mostly working on the fire since I was elected, I mean, pretty much to the, you know, a fault of not doing enough other things, there's a lot of people working really, really hard to try and be better prepared for next time. And I would like, if you don't mind, Riva, if you could take us through just some of your highlights and some of your thoughts on what you read, because you have been able to gather information that I simply, I'm not a part of because I don't sit at City Hall all day working. Well, sometimes I do, but not on that necessarily. So I'd love to know your perceptions, what you, you know, some of the major themes of what you think and what you've been working on related to this report, and anything else.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember. I mean, I think it's a difficult report to put together. I think the way the process went with the draft coming out without city staff having the opportunity to look at it before it became public, kind of allow some information that could be updated or clarified. Took that ability out of our hands. And so I look forward, you know, hopefully, with council direction, to working with a consultant to provide some more clarity on certain areas. I think, you know, there's a few things that I just want to point out that I think need to be made public that are actually incorrect that are in the report. Is that okay for me to do at this point? The first being that the EOC was unmanned for 16 hours. That's just incorrect. That's not what happened. The city staff was told to evacuate by the Fire Department and the Sheriff Department. That was a mandatory order provided to us. We did take all of the necessary supplies that were needed out of the EOC. In fact, we had several discussions internally with the staff that was here at City Hall at the time as to what items we needed with us. I've been with the city almost 15 years. And after the 2006 and 2007 fires, which literally circled our old City Hall building, we actually established quite a few redundant protocols for City Hall, particularly during emergencies. One is that there's a duplicate server system located out of state in Arizona, so that we have a continual system. This was obviously before the cloud system and storage capability. But we actually have a physical, complete backup of all of the city servers, which allows city staff to connect into all of our necessary documents, forms, city servers, city email, whether we're here in City Hall or whether we're off-site. All of the city staff that were working in the EOC the day of the fire had laptops, had laptops with them that they took with them when they left City Hall. And we did this because we often work remotely, and that allowed us to leave City Hall, leave Malibu, but continue to work remotely. The staff that staffed the EOC during that first critical time had been up from some, between 30 and 40 hours. And so it was time for a shift change. And we did that remotely. And we had city staff answering City Hall phones throughout that first night. We forwarded the phones, and those phones continued to be answered until we returned back to City Hall on November 27th. We had city staff up all night in contact with the current city, the council at the time, and the Fire Department. The one thing that I do acknowledge we could have done better throughout that night was to provide an update every few hours. It said, "There is no update. The mandatory evacuation remains in place." But other than that, we were working. So there was never a time when we weren't on that first night and then throughout the disaster. And again, to emphasize that we weren't given a choice to remain here at City Hall, we were ordered to evacuate. And I think with the suggestion that Mayor Pro Tem Farah made about speaking to Maria Greikhan with the Fire Department, she is the one who provided us with that direction, and that is why we left. There's just a few other discrepancies, kind of high level of dates that need to be corrected. Certain, quite a few recommendations. A lot of the recommendations are terrific. I think there's over about 25 that actually already were in place at the time of the Woolsey fire, or we have already completed and implemented those since the fire. There is another 10 to 12 that are currently underway. So we're all on the same page, thinking of ways to improve the things that we can. And then there's a handful that just aren't feasible. And so we'll certainly have to discuss those. And then the other really important point that I wanted to make is about the city's communication channels. The report fails to mention that we actually have an incredibly robust and active communication system through our website called e-notify, that is something that residents can sign up for. And we're probably the only city in California that I'm aware of that actually uses that system almost on a daily basis through our traffic advisories, our utility advisories, and our beach advisories. And we have almost 10 staff members that are completely fluent and comfortable in using that system. And so that failed to get mentioned. It also says that we failed to use the city's website during the emergency, which again is inaccurate. We, in fact, activated our emergency banner system throughout the website. The one thing that we did learn is that users going onto the website had to click more than once, and that's something we've since corrected. So it's easier to get that information right as you open the website. So we have the Everbridge system, which we had tested the prior year. We doubled the enrollment before the fire. And since the fire, we've purchased cellphone data to give us another 10,000 or so phone numbers through the Everbridge Reverse 911 system. We actively use our NICSIL system. Ted, I did want to just clarify that NICSIL error that came out that first day. We got that information from the Fire Department and then got corrected information. And so that's where you got two different messages, and that's just human error. So that's what happened there. But we, so we have our NICSIL, we have the website e-notification system, we have Reverse 911, which is Everbridge. And then our e-notification system automatically populates our Twitter, our Instagram, and our Facebook sites. So in terms of... So in terms of communication options, while there's power, we have many. And then since the fire, we certainly looked at some more old-fashioned systems, one being installation of sirens throughout neighborhoods, and we have an RFP out for the design of that currently. And we've applied for a grant to install those. We have a system in place that we would go and put whiteboards out in neighborhoods that could be updated on a daily basis to provide residents with information. And here at City Hall, we've actually purchased probably about 50 megaphones and red lights that can go on top of cars, and magnetic stickers that can go on the doors of cars that say "City Disaster Response Team." And our plan is to use city resources to get out into our neighborhoods to communicate about evacuations if we don't have law enforcement resources to assist us. So those are just a few that came off the top of my head. I don't know if that's what you, if I went off script there, or if that's what you were looking for.
No script. Let me ask you a question. When you read the report, what did you see that, or what did it make you remember were the major challenges that we faced during the fire, that you faced as a city organization?
I think that as much as we plan, and for a small city, we have planned and planned and planned. We knew we were going to have a fire. We knew that there was going to be a major mudsite. This is not something that is new to city staff. We have regular EOC drills with partner agencies. We have redundancies in place. But I think the scale of the disaster took everyone by surprise. I think the lack of power and therefore the lack of cell towers was something that was surprising. And the, being the last city in the line of this fire and kind of being the last to get sufficient resources was challenging for us and something that, as I think back, I think I just assumed that was happening, and now obviously we know it didn't. And that we were asking for help and being told it was on there and in place, and that wasn't the case just due to the chaos of the public, the law enforcement. So I think I would say just the scale of it that overtook us and the things that we can and already have in place, like safe refuge areas to get cars off the highway quickly using the large beach lots like Zuma or Will Rogers to literally just move cars off the road until we resolve traffic issues. So hindsight is certainly 2020, but I would say just the communication and the evacuation system was challenging.
Thanks for that. And do you feel the report sort of makes you feel that the city is on the right track or gives you some new ideas? Or do you think the report's lining up and helping in this endeavor? Because that was the whole point of the report, so. I'd put you on the spot to give them an opinion on the report.
Sure, no, absolutely, you know, and I'm certainly open to advice from a consultant, from our residents, from anybody who's been through this. For all of us who went through it together, I think it's very important for us to be open and implement any solution that would help, that I might not think of or staff might not think of. There's not a bad idea that we can do, and I think we should implement everything that we possibly can and can afford to. So, you know, I do think we're on the right path. I think we've got, you know, a lot of great things in the hopper, things we've already implemented. For example, in January, we appropriated money as part of the budget to change the supplies in our emergency bins. We realized during the fire, we had stocked them with things for earthquakes, and that wasn't right, and so we changed what was in there. And we've already implemented that, and that's in place and purchased and done. We've increased our CERT training and the members who are trained through that. We hired Jerry to go and talk to our community and help train and help the staff with fire issues. So yeah, I think we're on a really good path, and I'm very proud of how far we've come. And seeing the video of the house being framed is just another proof of how far along we are.
Thanks. I mean to put you on the spot there, but I know you've read it in detail, and you kind of are at the fulcrum of all the activities around it, so thank you for that. And those are my comments for right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mikey. Skylar or Rick?
I'll go. Thank you very much for your presentation and for doing all the hard work and making good recommendations. Just a couple of typos. It's not LAFD, that's the City Fire Department. It's LACOFD. I work for the fire department, sorry about that.
And there's a zip code typo as well.
Yeah, and it's not 90256, it's 90265 in that Greater Malibu thing on your map. Want to talk a little bit about, you know, mentioned a few times about, and it's come up this evening about, you got to co-locate the EOC, and you know, you should be with the county and all that. And I think that that's true. Whenever possible, you want to be right there with the people that you're talking to. And it also goes to the scale of this thing that a city manager just talked about. I think for a lot of people in Malibu, they look at their historical context. And for those of us who've lived through the recent fires, it's the 93 fire, 96 fire, the Canyon fire in 2007, and the Corral fire in 2007. And all of those I would describe as Malibu-only fires, okay? And to put this one into perspective, this fire was 20 times bigger than the Corral fire and started 30 miles away and was absolutely gigantic in scale. And I think it's important to remember that. So in an instance like that, as opposed to those Malibu-only fires where you might be able to have the command post, and that's usually what they are at smaller instances like that, at Pepperdine or something, or near City Hall, it's entirely possible to maybe co-locate. But on a giant thing like this, which is truly a state, and you know, event where you've got the incident command post at Camarillo, it's probably impractical in something like that. But I agree with you, whenever possible, it's good to co-locate. There are certain times that it's just not possible. So I think you have to build in that flexibility and work with the liaisons and work with the communication, and always have a representative, which we had at the command post at all times, and the county EOC. So that's a good point, but I do think it's important to remember that sometimes these things can be gargantuan. And as the climate change guy said, you know, maybe it's, this is the way of the future. I mean, there may be even bigger ones to come. So that's one thing that I wanted to mention. Pamela said something about it's important for us to educate our children on what to do and stuff. That's a critical point, and it gets to a couple of items that you talked about in this thing, which I think that, for me, the key items you talked about, which is on page two, you said, and you talked, you just mentioned it this evening, you said, "The city of Malibu is not a first responder for any fire event, and there is considerable confusion and misinformation regarding the city's role and responsibility before, during, and after a fire event." And you show the great schematic with all the different agencies and stuff. And I think it's important for us as a city going forward is to help to educate our residents as to what to expect in a disaster. Like, what is the role of the city? What is the role of the fire department? What is the role of the, you know, law enforcement, et cetera, et cetera? And where do we fit in? And the other thing that you did, which is, to me, the key, those, this, that, and this are the two key items that I think are going to be the cornerstones of success as we move forward. And that's recommendation 29. Educate residents about their roles and responsibilities during and after a disaster. And I think that's super important because we live in a very high severity fire hazard zone. And everybody needs to accept that reality and accept that risk. And there is risk to live in a risky area. And it's our role in the city is to try to communicate what that means for people and how they, during a disaster, can be part of the solution and not part of the problem. It's not commonly known, but there were an inordinate amount of EMS calls and public assist calls and all sorts of calls to the fire department redirecting fire department resources as the fire was impacting Point Dume. So there are, if you, if individuals have a plan and know what they're going to do on the day of the fire and where they fit into the equation and how they can be a part of the solution and not inadvertently becoming part of the problem or making things more complex, I think that it's, I agree with Scott. The next time we can have Woolsey Fire Two, we should not lose 450 homes. It's entirely possible. We could only lose 50 homes, probably no homes. And I think a lot of that emanates from the neighborhoods on out. And our role in the city is to help facilitate that type of planning. And I think Jerry's presence in the city right now is a key part of that. And that has to be a continual educational conversation and culture shift, I think, for all of us. And it's something that complacently will set in, of course, if we don't have a fire in a few years. But we can't let our guard down, and it has to be a way of life. It's like the old bumper stickers, "Malibu, way of life." Well, a part of that way of life is preparing for the worst-case scenario because we are disaster central, and we are home of the big fires, and they're getting bigger. So I appreciate that recommendation, number 29. And I think it's really the key relationship between the city and the residents moving forward is where does the city fit in and where do the residents fit in and how we as a team moving forward can best support each other and our neighbors and neighborhoods going forward. So thank you very much for that. And that is actually, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Skylar, you're up.
Thank you, Jefferson. One question that came to me from somebody in the public was if, I don't know if maybe one of the people from Management Partners, or maybe actually Reva, this may be for you, would be just to explain, you know, really so that the public knows what the difference is between the Emergency Operations Center and/or Command Center? Because I've had a couple of questions about that.
Certainly. So the Emergency Operations Center for the city is where city staff is located, and our role at the Emergency Operations Center is to receive information from the fire department and law enforcement and communicate that information back out to our community. It's to assist with establishing places for people to shelter. So we work with the Red Cross to set up shelters and communicate that information to residents during an evacuation so they know where to go, and then to continue to communicate all of that, working through the official structure established by both the federal government and the state government, and working with the county. So we're really just a recipient of information. We don't actually make decisions as to what's happening. Part of the role of the EOC is to have staff at what's called the command post. The command post in this particular incident was originally located in Thousand Oaks and then was moved to the Camarillo Airport under the command of the agencies that had command of the disaster, and that was Cal Fire in a joint command with LA County Fire and the Sheriff's Department and those same agencies and Ventura. So at all times during the Woolsey fire, we did have usually two staff members. In this particular one, it was from our Public Works Department, just because they lived closest to the Camarillo Airport at the command post at all times. And then I attended daily briefing, sometimes twice daily briefings at the command post. So what's going on at the command post is very different than the Emergency Operations Center for our residents who've been here on prior fires. The fire department set those command posts up here in the Civic Center area, so it was base camp for the fire department, for the camp crews, where people were able to sleep, there was food, and then that's where, in this particular incident, all the different agencies had their command posts there. So that's kind of the difference between the command post and the EOC. And we also had staff at the county EOC, which is located in Alhambra, which may hamper some of our abilities to co-locate with them.
Thank you for that. I'd like to thank Management Partners for their diligence in this report. I would have liked to see like another, like, community member interviewed, like, kind of from each area of the fire. So I don't know how that would work into something in the future, but like, somebody from the Decker area, somebody from the Malibu West area, somebody from the Malibu Park area, somebody from the Point Dume area, somebody from the Latigo area, for whatever that's worth. Trevor, I appreciate you bringing up the comment about climate change. While I would think it's fair to say that climate change may not have been the cause of this fire, our warming climate definitely contributed to the fire, likely being worse than it would have been if we weren't under those conditions. And I don't know how that works into your guys' report, if that's something that's done or not done, or if this council wants to bring something back declaring a state of emergency. I support that. Reva, maybe that's a future item that we can do. I'd like to see that happen. And I don't know if that, how that... Just bring it. There we go. Just bring it. Our reality check. I think that in this event, that the thing that, for any of us, and for me, like, reading back over this report, is that there's no question in my mind that anyone that I saw was trying to do the most good for the most amount of people. And that members of the community stepped up beyond belief, members of the fire department, the sheriff's department, and others did, went above and beyond, I think, what their call of duty was, and it was really a shame when sometimes it felt like that wasn't the case. And I felt that a little bit even during that incident, but I also understand how their orders work. And I also recognize, and I don't know how much this was discussed, but there was also, for as many stories as there were, where fire trucks weren't helping somebody, there was that many more stories of where they were helping people, or where they were flagged down off of the highway without standing orders and saved a community, or saved Paradise Cove, or saved some of the condo buildings and, you know, areas where there was a large area of homes that the trucks that were passing by on the highway weren't even aware existed. And I don't know how you get those reports other than talking to those people in the community that flagged them down. And those people exist all over the place, and it's not fair to think that you're going to get all of that. But I also just want to say that I appreciate this staff, more than anything, for working around the clock to make our community safe. So thank you. That's it.
Mikey, you have another comment?
I just wanted to actually address everyone here. I really appreciate everyone in the community that's been stepping up and helping because it's already been said, but if this is, it's almost surprising how few people are here, if you think about it, with what we went through and how much trauma we've all been through. But those people that are stepping up, that's what it's going to take. That's what Malibu's always been about. The Malibu I grew up in was people took care of Malibu, and we need that. And we're gonna, these events, we're not going to have enough of any government or fire department or anyone that's going to come save us. So for all the people thinking we're going to be saved by the city of Malibu, or the fire department, or the sheriff's department, it's going to take all of us together. So this group that's here right now, I really appreciate that, and I just want to point that out because that's how we're going to make a difference moving forward. And for all the input that everyone's given tonight and some of the couple of letters that came into Pamela's and everyone's, thank you very much. I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Thank you, Mikey. I have several comments, I've written them out. Excuse me. I've had the opportunity to work through Sheila Kewell's office on the after-action report, and then I have been able to compare the two reports from Management Partners and the one that Sheila Kewell has invited me in. And theirs came up with about 70 fixes for the county report. Ours is similar in size, realizing that our area is smaller than the county. Judging by what you've heard this evening, it sounds like you're in good hands, there's hope. I don't know if that will satisfy a number of people who have a different opinion. I'm not going to address the people that had a different opinion this evening. I'm going to try and move forward with this. So it seems like there are two juggernauts at play here. The citizens who some communicate, like who are here this evening, and some who choose not to communicate because of their frustrations and their aggravations and their disappointments. So I hear from both sides. I'm chief of staff right now for another couple more months. And when I read Management Partners' report, I came up with some of my own suggestions. And I think the community needs to realize that we may be setting some boundaries that we may not be able to follow up upon. Rick made comment on item 29. Rick made comment on item 29 in your suggestions. I read through that deeply. And we have to pick a point where, as a municipality, we are realizing that we are culpable for what we train for, what we don't recognize and what we may miss. So if you look to a city attorney, culpability is you exposed it, you addressed it, but you didn't behave or you didn't follow through. Follow through to this community is something that they have in hand. This is our third stab at this kind of thing. Six months ago, we were given a report 462 pages long. I read it all. I came up with about 70 to 80 of my own suggestions, far too numerous to elaborate at a meeting like this evening. So I went out on my own with a appointee of Rick's at the Planning Commission. And we collaborated. We took copies. We cut and pasted off Topanga. We found things that we could move forward with. I presented it to Dan Singer, Management Partners. Some of it made it into the plan. Some of it made it into the comment section. Some of it even made it into Sheila's comments. So at what point do we bring the people in and have a sit-down that is constructive rather than through the media? And it's sad that that had to happen, but maybe that put the point out on us as council members. How do we deliver? When are we going to deliver? When is the staff and the city manager going to deliver? That's what people want right now. The people in the East End are looking for leadership, and we need to provide that. I don't think we've delivered, and I'll be very frank about it. And I think there are a lot of people in the East End who are disappointed and scared. That's what I get. You may not see it in the emails. I get it in the phone calls and the visits to my retail store. So I'm looking to the city and to the council to read the Sheila Kuehl report, which is now available. Look at the 70 suggestions.
Where is it?
Well, IGN. I got mine. I know it's out there somewhere. I just printed this off the Internet.
I'm not aware of a final report from the task force.
It says draft on it. It says draft.
I haven't received it, but I'll certainly look for it.
Okay. Well, so I would use this as a comparison as to what Management Partners presented us and take the two suggestions or three suggestions that are most glaring in both reports and make that the focus for the city to finite and create a position so that we can get the confidence of the people in the East End and they feel like something's being done for them. So that's where I'd like to leave it. I'll tell you that the page is starting on page 17. You can't keep up with this because it's gonna, you can watch the recording afterwards. So it starts on page 17, item three, then page 29, item one and two. Why do we even have a hire if we're in a city we're not responsible? There are several glaring instances here where there is a nexus for SEMs and NIMS, which I've been schooled on now. Thank you, Rick. Thank you, Riva. 21, educate the council. Well, educate the council. 26, city phones, they were left behind. 28, GIS. Both of those were elaborated on in the Sheila Kuehl report as well as in your report. And sadly, in the county, they couldn't even get the GIS information into the computers. It's in the report. So, you know, 29, as Rick had mentioned, what expectations are we setting up for people in the city? I don't want to let them down. 30, I presented a plan. It's been written about in both of the local papers here, the Malibu Times and the Surfside News. Item 30 is in my plan. 33 is in my plan. 41 is in my plan. 42 is a copy of TSEP. All I did was cut and paste. 43 is in my plan. 45 is in my plan. 46 in the plan. Number 38, paragraph one, in my plan. Number three, the Hill and Springs Fire. What does that have to do with the congestion at the south end of PCH? The fire guys should have been consulted, and Rick's knowledge of this, he could elaborate on that. We had a fuel reduction from the Springs Fire four years ago. We knew the Hill Fire didn't have all that fuel to consume. If you look at the fire maps, don't take my word, just look at the fire maps from the satellites, the fire died on its own, yet resources were sent up there. That's a huge failure. We didn't need to stop down at Topanga. You could have evacuated out of the northwest end. Item 47, it's in my plan. Item 49 is in my plan. Number 51 on the top page 40, paragraph number four. Number 52, city is assuming additional liabilities. So when we talk about these things, I think we need to consult the city attorney because if we lead down the wrong path on any of these, we may be liable in the future. And that is also in the Sheila Kuehl report here as well. So I look forward to discussing this in the future in detail. And I heard a suggestion up here this evening that we have some kind of a, other than Mikey and Karen, some kind of collaboration with our staff and some of the people in the community that are the disappointed few that feel unconfident with the East End preparation for this fire season. I know I'm not going to be popular here. That's not my job. My job is to be transparent and prepare you for what's coming. It may not be this year. It may be when Mikey and Karen are here in a few years, but the East End is next to burn. And we need to move on this and not talk about it any longer. So if you want to come see me when I get back from the base, I have an awful lot of information I'd like to share with you. Thank you very much.
Mayor, can I ask a quick question? What?
Yeah.
Yes. What do you think the, you said, two or three main items we should focus on? Do you have a sense of what those are?
Well, Rick elaborated on 29, which is in the suggestions. It's also in the Sheila Kuehl suggestions that the expectations that a community has of its city staff, city manager and the city council has to be put in perspective, as it's indicated in the report here, that we, in essence, are only providers of information. And that's how it appeared in this Woolsey event. And we need to tell everybody out there that if you're going to stay behind, which I did, be prepared and then also sign off on the culpability, the responsibility of saying, okay, here it is, you're on your own. And that's what I call this fire is the yo-yo. And I know it's unfortunate that I have to say that, but there's a half a community here that feels the same way.
So Jefferson, basically what you're saying is be prepared to die if you're willing to stay?
No. It's not being prepared to die, Skylar. It's being prepared to defend or move or take care of structure protection on your own. Certainly, the fire department was encumbered by a number of areas for response that they could not possibly cover at all. I get that. But the boots on the ground were willing to work and go to bat. From Rick down, were willing to go to bat. What the problem here is, and it's in the Kuehl report, is it started at the top. And that comes down to Chief Osby. He's going to hear this tonight. I'm going to get a phone call tomorrow. And I really don't care. And I don't care that when Maroni read me my "You're Wrong, Wagner" at the Sheila Kuehl meeting, I saved 250,000 people through an evacuation, only three died. No, sir, you didn't. The density here on the 101 corridor through Calabasas, Agora, Hidden Hills, Thousand Oaks is not the same density as at Paradise. It's also not the same density and burn patterns that we have in Malibu. Divide them up, and that's where you come up with these numbers that we saw here. What a great job was done. Only three people perished. So I'll battle it out with those guys at the top. But I believe that the boots on the ground had the best interest in the community. The leadership was the failure, and I don't want to have that happen again. So Mikey, you had another question on two, it was one out of two. You have two more?
You said you had a two or, you thought we should focus on two or three items, and I was just asking you what you thought those, if you had a sense of what those two or three items are as a council.
Certainly, I'll try and elaborate and be as brief as I can. I think what the community wants is something like this. I've brought this up before. It's real, simple science. It's the same science you can hand to a first responder who's coming from out of the area in the mutual aid. In the Sheila report, mutual aid deficiencies were cited because communication was at lax. It was the worst. I mean, and we're having to admit that here. Communication was our failure. This is a simple system. This is a bunch of hippies with homes in Topanga. This is their second try. Here's what they did before. Here's what the county's done. And I came to the councils three to six months ago and I said, where is this? It hasn't happened. I went out on my own. I think this is where we're headed, and I know we have enough staff to complete this. I'd like to see it. I think the people in the East End deserve it. And you had another question?
No, I just, something you could agendaize.
Yeah, that's why we're here.
Mayor, can I just jump in about the evacuation plan? That the city staff has already taken that as an assignment from the council. We issued an RFP several months ago and are now working with a traffic engineer who's coming up with all of that information and data. Even though we don't have that formal information back from the consultant, city staff is actually developing its own evacuation plan internally, that if there was a fire tomorrow, we have something in place. And we have been working with all of our partner agencies, including as recently as this past week, on developing a tabletop exercise that addresses exactly what you're concerned with, so that we have those discussions with all of the agencies involved in evacuation challenges, evacuation, safe areas to go to. And so we have that in the works. And while I don't have it in a colored document to bring to you at this time, it's something that we are well, well down that path because obviously we know that's one of the highest priorities.
Thank you, Riva. And I did read that, the traffic engineer is hired. I've read all that and thank you for that and elaborating on that. Maybe our communication skills here at the city should be equally as transparent because the staff and you and the council here have enough time to get these things done. Maybe we need to communicate with the community about what we're actually doing. I know we were all set on trying to do the rebuild, but I think community people look at us for leadership and they want to feel confident. And I think if we were more open with that, where we are, what stage we're at, I think they would feel more confident. I know I would.
I really appreciate that, and we'll do everything we can to make sure we're communicating more and better on the things that we've accomplished. We are trying to put that in my weekly update that goes out on the website every week, and we'll certainly increase the presence on that communication.
Thank you. I think it would help a lot of people in the community.
I have two questions. If the county draft report, if it's allowed, the report you've been referencing, I'd like for that to be distributed. So could somebody, Riva or Jefferson, could one of you look into that?
I already put a request into the county while we were sitting here. I'm not aware of a report out. I thought there were still some follow-up meetings happening next week. I believe you're attending Mayor Pro Tem Fair. So I will certainly look into that, and as soon it's available, we will certainly push that out. The mayor might have a draft since he's on the committee or the task force, that he may have something that we don't have access to.
Yes, it says draft all over it.
The other thing I would like to request is when we do compare our report with the counties, you know, I don't think it's a good idea to compare the two drafts. They're drafts for a reason. They're not finished. They have incomplete information. At least I know the city's does. I'm assuming it's probably the same for the county. I would like to see that comparison done when those reports are finalized.
Mayor, sorry to interrupt one more time. I did just find out from staff that we are working on the brochure that you asked us to do, the one that you have in your hand, and that will be published in September. So very soon, next month.
That's great news. Very happy to hear that. So I look forward to that, and I think half of this community will look forward to it. Thank you for that.
The other thing, too, while I have the stage, I might as well share, we're also working on a mailing that will go to a big postcard that will be going to every household in Malibu that provides information about how Jerry can help them with safeguarding their home, what to do in a disaster, important phone numbers. So we're really trying to get some more information out to community members of what to do, really emphasizing the Ready, Set, Go program that the county uses. So look forward to that in your mailbox in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you, Riva. Also, on the last topic for myself, if you have other questions, I'll be happy to entertain them. I had some young employees at the store do some research on FEMA and some of the elaborations that were concerns for the city as far as repatriating and moving materials around. And it was cited, and I think Woodworth Brent also made, I see you're here this evening, made note of these things, that FEMA has never declined a claim after a disaster has been formulated. So some of the rhetoric about not doing the right thing or being in violation, we should make that very clear and make that apparent in the near future, along with the data that Riva has indicated we'll have in September, that we have a formulated opinion from our city attorney about the liabilities and the events that may come up and how we educate. Because without your opinion on this, I'm sure the lawyers will just pick it apart.
I would like to make a motion to receive this document and direct staff to work with Management Partners to come up with the final version.
A second?
And one comment, I would just ask that if anyone has corrections or can add information to this report, including the public, I know a few members of the public have written in already. It's great. Please, this is a draft report. They're asking for any extra details or things that could be clarified or missed or whatever it is. That would be, now's the time. So that would be my one request, everybody.
Those are welcome.
Any final comments?
Yes, thank you very much for putting this report together and making those recommendations. Really appreciate it.
I feel like I have to ask this question. I know we had a contract in the amount of $50,000. I'm not sure where we stand now going forward, having Management Partners work with the city and put more time into this. So could we get some kind of clarification?
I haven't been managing the contract, so I can't speak to that.
Kristi, you have?
My recollection was that it was a flat rate and that, yeah, so I'm not expecting that there's going to be any significant additional cost at this point to bring it to final. Assuming we're not going to have another meeting and just left them all down here.
Okay, thank you.
Additionally, you might want to check out the draft when it's available from Sheila Kuehl's office. The comparisons were very similar and very educational. And I think we all need to see that and feel that, that we're being educated as well as served by your report. I think it'd be very valuable. It'll be out soon. This just says draft on it, that's all. So moving forward.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, 7A.
Item 7A, Senate Bill SB 542. Essentially, I was contacted, I think Karen was on the contact too, maybe? Maybe not. Maybe it was just me. I don't remember. It seems like I thought it was a text from Henry asking our senator why we weren't supporting SB 542. My answer to him was, there's 4,000 bills. What is 542? Why haven't you let us know you want us to support it? So we met and talked. And 542 is to define that post-traumatic stress and mental disorder for first responders is included in the workers' compensation benefits. We're right now, it's... is included in the workers' compensation benefits, where right now it's apparently vague. And after particularly hearing and seeing a presentation from Chief Osby on the huge amount of firefighter first responders that have taken their own lives due to post-traumatic stress, that would seem like a no-brainer at all. And I think for anyone in this community who's dealt with the fire, whether you stayed and fought it or not, it's easy to understand. We've all got those tapes playing in our head and trying to, you know, work our way through all that information. So, basically, Henry has asked for support, and I'm asking this council to support him on this, because I think it makes perfect sense.
I'll make a motion to support this letter of support for SB 542.
Second.
Rick seconds it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That concludes this evening's meeting at 9:20. Thank you very much for coming. See you in two weeks.
...in our generation, but I've been involved with the U.S. and International Olympic Committee, having been designated an athlete for the Mexico City Olympics in 1968, but sadly, I was totaled in a car accident and couldn't participate. But since...